The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning, John.
Do you have an agenda before you or an addition to correction to the agenda? Motion by Moore.
I'll second.
Second by Rick. So through the agenda as printed, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. We have minutes from the last meeting, which is November ninth, and the addition to those corrections. Got all the election results in there.
I read through my addition to the approval of the crew.
Motion by Bruce.
I'll second.
Second by Jerry to through the minutes as printed. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. I've seen that light from the public, so that means you're up, Paul.
I didn't know if we wanted to do amend for that tile crossing, but I'll get to that after we do the regulations.
Yeah.
We can do that next week. First order of business, good morning, how are you Viking fans? Approve resignation of Humboldt County Secondary Road personnel. That was supposed to be kind of the day, Paul.
Yeah, yeah.
And the first thing we have, I, Gary Alfreds, regretfully do hereby resign from the Humboldt County Secondary Road Department after completing approximately thirty-nine years of service. My last working day will be December first, two thousand fifteen.
All right, I'm gonna make the motion to accept his resignation with regret, and I would say about Gary, he's been a very, very good employee all these years. If you've got one person that made it to work every snowstorm without...
Twice. Twice he was late.
Okay, twice, Paul, I'd say he was late, but...
Thirty-nine years?
Thirty-nine years.
Somebody hit him once, rear-ended him, turned his corner.
Which was one of them, yeah.
And one time he got hung up in Dick Sorensen, had to go get him somewhere.
In thirty-nine years.
He was digging out by himself, trying to get out, couldn't get out.
In my opinion, there's been nobody more dependable and steady than Gary, and he's was easy on equipment, took care of it, and he would go out and blade all day long if that's what he had to do. So with that, I'd make a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll second that motion.
There might be a few in the shop that would contest some of that discussion, Mr. Higginson.
That's okay, they can take it up with me. They have been there as long, and I know every one of them guys in that shop.
Okay, we have motion and second to accept Gary's resignation affecting December one. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried.
December first?
December first, yeah.
I should've given you a copy of that. Maybe I did?
Yeah, you did, I thought.
We had it.
Oh, no, you didn't give us that, you didn't give us that, but you just gave us the...
Okay, um, second order of business, and I'll hand this to, uh, so we hit right so far. Second order of business is to approve transfer posting for opening in the Hardy Maintenance area. Seeing Mr. Alfreds had resigned or retired from Hardy office, uh, we opened up, uh, any changes to any routes or whatever unofficially in the office last week. Seeing none, were ready to, uh, propose, uh, a transfer opening. In other words, we would post an opening to all county shops of anybody that wants to transfer. They'd have five days to transfer. The most, the highest, uh, the one with the most seniority that applies will automatically be given the transfer. If none, if no people left to transfer, then I would assume that next week we would be officially opening a position and advertising for a position in the Hardy Maintenance area. If somebody transfers to this, then we have to fill the position where they came from locally, and then we have to offer a transfer to that position, and once nobody elects to transfer...
It'll take a while.
And sometimes it takes a couple iterations. Never know. There's different discussions on who may, who may go to Hardy tour, uh, as opposed to some other place.
Okay. You entertain a motion to approve the posting and the opening?
I'll move.
Motion by Bruce. Second by Moore. Those in favor, motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried.
Third order of business, I put on the agenda, approved vacation requests from secondary road maintenance personnel for January fortieth, two thousand sixteen, to February sixteenth, two thousand sixteen. Although we approve many, uh, vacations throughout, throughout the winter, they all are generally in the absence of snow, and, and in this case, someone wants to take a planned vacation, uh, thus I brought a formal request that cleared all the formans first, uh, and, uh, and then I bring it to the board for final approval. There is, uh, the mechanisms here are, so we're here to plow snow, uh, and it's generally accepted practice that we, uh, limit vacations in the wintertime, uh, but, uh, we're down to, this is the only request at this point, and, uh, the last time this gentleman requested was six years ago for a similar action.
All right, I'll make a motion to approve the request. Here we have motion to approve a request by secondary road employee for winter vacation. Go ahead, second.
Second.
Second by Bruce. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried.
And I have a late addition for discussion because it didn't make the agenda, it didn't even make our office till this morning, but last week, uh, we approved a drainage into the road ditch by Mr. Tim Burris, uh, on Kentucky Avenue. Uh, this morning, he brought a similar request for a similar piece, uh, right beside it. Uh, he's got two parcels, uh, three parcels right there with the road that meanders through it, and, and he would like to add on to, uh, add, add on to the tile. Uh, Mr. Marshall is out there as we speak, uh, and he would be draining into the south ditch on the east to west portion of this with, he listed about twelve-hundred-and-twenty feet of tile. And, uh, we did not add it. I don't think we need to. I think that I would recommend this, uh, approval, and we can go ahead and fire this up for next week's agenda if, uh, if that's what we wish.
I'd like to get my...
Right there.
And he's wrote the letter to himself, so...
So last week, he had a, a request for the north-south portion of this, where he dumped in the east side, and they installed that on Saturday afternoon.
Yeah.
And, uh, as they got a tile there, they're, uh, adding on to it, uh, and would like to go south of the, uh, south right away on the east-west portion. He's got the agreement with himself to discharge it. He knows that he'll maintain the ditch or anything because of this.
Okay.
Um, and I, in this case, encouraged him to just cross, uh, with, uh, underground tile to cross the whole road and tie into this piece that he just put in, and he'd rather just dump into the ditch at this point, maybe down the road, he's crossed the road.
So you don't want to motion today?
I was waiting at it.
You just want to check up in sources, because they're probably gonna...
Go ahead and...
Because they're gonna work on it this week, isn't it?
Yeah, I don't see any problem with this.
Okay, that's fine.
And while he's there, the circumstances are, it's all, it's not, it's all himself that he'd be arguing with, uh, and he wrote himself an agreement that will have him locked.
Okay.
If he gets an argument with himself, then I'd say that, that he's in trouble. Otherwise, uh, uh, no good news this morning, uh, uh, no bad news. Uh, last year at this time, I believe we were in, uh, minus or zero degree weather, so we're at least missing it this early.
Wait till next week.
Is that right? I hope not.
Okay, anything else, Paul? Thank you. Let's, uh, I see Linda's not in here yet. Let's go down and approve transfer of community betterment funds to rural services fund in amount of forty thousand dollars.
When we worked, um, on the budget for this current fiscal year, we decided we would transfer half of the money, um, into rural services for the libraries. So half of it was forty thousand dollars, so that's already in our budget. We just haven't transferred it across yet, so need your approval for that.
Very good. You entertain a motion to transfer forty thousand dollars?
So that's basically the other half.
It's just one half.
Right.
And the other half will come out of rural services.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
I'd make the motion.
Okay, motion by Bruce.
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Those in favor of transferring from community betterment fund to rural services in amount of forty thousand? Any other discussion? Routine matter, I think we do this curiously.
Mm-hmm.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Okay, we have application number five, Woodworth Construction for LLC, work completed on a law enforcement center.
Um, the balance due at this time is one thirty-nine, one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and forty-five dollars. I look back at the, uh, balances in the building fund, subtracted this payment, and would still have about a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred in there, and then the balance to finish is two hundred and twenty-eight eight seventy-nine according to this report because of some...
Changes.
Reporters, yeah, change orders. So it'll be about thirty thousand, nine hundred short, so we'll have to make up that difference like from general basic or community betterment or somewhere we'll have to make up the difference. But I thought I'd give you kind of a progress update.
For Rick.
Where we're standing on funding. And this is just the building portion, that's not the equipment.
Right, yeah.
We'd probably have that in community betterment, wouldn't we?
Oh, yeah.
The, uh...
Progress is there. First part of December, it's gonna be done.
That's really encouraging.
What is, so where we got payment wise, I mean, we got money, I mean, is it a hundred eighty percent or we...
Um, I don't know if this says.
All percentage wise?
Probably two thirds of the payment.
Yeah.
Different things, when we get to the end here and see what it says.
Approximately.
Yeah.
Seventy-two point eight eight percent of the project.
A little higher, okay. That's why we're a little behind, we're gonna be a little short, yeah, okay. That'll work, we'll make something work for that.
And then that will be part of the retainage, because your retainage is twenty-seven...
Oh, sure.
Something. It won't be short.
A lot of that, Rick, was just that ramp part, right?
The ramp was twenty-some thousand.
That was the biggest problem.
No, I can go through it. The ramp was twenty-some thousand, the asbestos was eight billion.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, uh, and then, um, they never figured any electrical change over in the dean's office, the deputy's office.
Oh.
Um, so they rewired all that. That was part of the change.
Which is good.
Yeah, the thing is, once you get in here, see what kind of crap you're working with that you need to fix it right the first time.
Yeah, you don't wanna have to go back.
This is not related to this item here, but did you get the equipment over?
I'm gonna go do that this morning. Around about lunch, at one o'clock, we're meeting with the gentleman.
Okay, we have a item here, approve application number five.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry.
I'll second.
Second by Rick. Other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried. Okay, we gotta wait.
Are they closer in the windows? I see they...
They got a frame, so that means they ordered the glass, and that takes about two weeks, okay?
Once they order it. Ten days, two weeks to get the glass, once they order it. So evidently they've probably got it on order, being the frames are in.
It's really nice, you got that all buttoned up now, and no matter what the weather is, they can work.
Yeah.
Except a little bit up front, maybe on...
They're gonna work on that canopy, I think, this week too, so if the weather's conducive, but it doesn't sound real good.
No.
No.
All right.
It's already...
Yeah.
They don't like you like that.
Yep, they didn't know we'd get a paycheck.
In my head it's like...
I suppose you gotta find out. How many people wanna go to this and get that?
Yeah, I was gonna say, don't forget too, if you're going, to the district supervisor to fill that out and get it back to me. I left everybody one of these.
For you.
Okay, thank you, Linda.
Morning, Linda.
Good morning.
We've been waiting you on your smiling face this morning.
Oh, good.
We're all ready for you.
Okay, I have for you our annual new homesteads and militaries and cancellations of homesteads and militaries. And we had, um, a hundred and sixty-eight homesteads canceled and sixty-six militaries canceled. We had a hundred and twenty-four new homesteads and twenty-two new militaries. Now, there's not very many, but there's, uh, few in this that were canceled that are now, they apply for the disabled veterans' homesteads. So we, we canceled the old regular homestead and military, and then they get the new, um, disabled veteran homestead credit.
Disabled veterans. That amounts to quite a bit more, doesn't it?
It's total tax is exempt on the property. And here, uh, these are the new ones. We keep these confidential, so, um...
Yeah.
If you don't mention their name.
And there's how many new ones that are disabled?
Um...
You know where you're looking.
I just have to count.
Yeah.
Four.
Okay.
All right.
That's quite a reduction over the year, net loss of...
I got a question. When we have homestead canceled, why are they canceled? Is that because of change of owners?
Right, they, they, uh, either moved...
Moved, passed away.
Yeah, change of ownership, um, renting it out. Most of them are probably they've, it's change of ownership.
More in my head.
And then that's what, there's probably forty difference, because now the people aren't living in that home, so...
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah. And here's, uh, the applications, if you wanna see them.
No, I'm fine.
We'll give those to Peggy then.
We'll let Peggy digest.
Taken care of.
Yes, she will. Yes, she will.
Other questions concerning, uh, cancellation of homesteads?
Better than...
No. You have to do it on a separate way?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve and to cancel homestead and military applications.
Okay, motion by Rick.
Second.
Second by Moore. To approve the cancellation of homestead and military applications. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried.
I'll make a motion to approve the disabled, disabled veterans' homestead applications.
Second.
A motion by Rick, second by Bruce, to approve the disabled veterans' homestead application, as explained by Linda. Other discussion?
Uh, did you do the new homestead?
Yep.
We did that in the first one.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, it wasn't written that way, but...
Approve and cancel homestead and military application.
No.
Approving would be the new one.
Oh, the approving would be...
Canceling would be the...
That's right. Approve, cancel, cancel. Okay, we have another...
We got it.
Yeah. We have a motion to approve the, the disabled veterans' homestead applications.
Second.
We have a motion and second.
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Vote nay, motion carried.
Perfect.
That is enough.
That is enough.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, let's go to reports before we get to drainage, shall we?
Okay.
Calendar.
Yeah, the calendar. Thursday morning, uh, what are my dates here? Yeah, twel- twelve, yeah, that was Thursday. Eight o'clock, we had our Board of Health meeting, and, uh, not a lot on the agenda. We have a report here from Elder Bridge, I see, and they're asking with a slight increase for next year. I would say that all the Elder Bridge funding with the Board of Health has already been used up, which is always utilized early on, so that is a good program. Those dollars do a lot of good to help people get in-home care, help them get evaluations, help them stay in their homes, and as long, you know, longer versus trying to have to go to a care center somewhere else. So they utilize all those dollars, and they've been utilized, which we do about this time of year, every year, and then they reshuffle dollars from other areas to try and help cover some of those costs, so. Just put in a note for Elder Bridge. And then, um, Don, we visited with him a little bit on quite a few, um, well closings this year and quite a few, uh, water tests done. And if you get a hold of them, you want your water tested on the farm, it, they can do that, they, they cover the cost, and it's about a hundred and ten dollar cost to have that tested. So, you know, if you have a question on your water, especially on acreages that are being sold and stuff, that's a good program to, I would recommend having your water tested, just for, so everybody knows, so. And I really don't think I had anything else, that's probably, that's all I had for the week.
Okay, Monday morning, had an LCA meeting, um, we discussed a, um, what was that more? That was a service plan with, uh, for our recorder, because the warranty ran out, and, uh, so we decided to do a one-year extension, wasn't it, and then kind of monitor it, because they gave it an option of different, and we're gonna monitor, see how many times they do come up and what it costs, so. And, uh, then on Thursday morning, I had, uh, Humboldt County Development Association at seven. There's, um, a few things going on and pending, but can't talk much about, but, um, it's a good, good organization, and they work real hard to track new business, and, you know, it's out there.
Also on the night, we had, um, a walkthrough after our meeting, and, uh, all the names, um, I don't know how far they had come along. See, the last time we did it, all they had up was the steel studying.
Studs, yeah.
Studing, yeah. So they, they coming along all the way. But, uh, I point by this guy, they've got the walls all grinning and everything.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, they're, they're probably gonna be painting this week.
But that was the only meeting I had.
I didn't have any.
Very good. On Monday, I just went down to the open house after Aaron Burnett. His last day was thirteenth of February, or January, November, Friday the thirteenth. And then ten o'clock on Tuesday morning, we had another session of courthouse security, which continued to go through the procedures we have now and looking at things we might consider in the future. Wednesday night, we had a meeting, it started out to be a court hearing, ended up being a meeting of, uh, commission on a situation with our emergency manager, that may continue in December. Uh, Friday, we had a short daycare meeting, and there might be some change of plans there as to location. We're talking about that this time, nothing confirmed. That was it for me. Anything else, Peggy?
Take a break till nine?
I think there are a couple of, of Veterans Day observance. We had one yesterday in our church, but to give a shout out to our veterans in Humboldt County and thank them all for their service.
Paul and I went to the one on, what day was that, Wednesday?
Whatever day is Veterans Day, Wednesday.
Wednesday, yeah.
You went to...
BFW. Had several young kids in there, they enjoyed the program.
They had it on the radio, a couple of the interviews of the little...
Oh, did they really?
Little kids, which...
That's pretty cool.
And I think that the veterans get a kick out of the, you know, with younger kids.
Sounds like they might permanently move that to the BFD.
That's the way it sounded.
Because it was, that really worked out.
Well, it worked out nice, and then they had that singing brigade in there, and they had microphones for that, and they did a nice job. And then they feed them sandwiches afterwards, the military people that are there, so. The back room was full.
Uh, our sacred church had a banquet then Wednesday night for anybody with a veteran free of charge. I think there's a hundred and seventy-some people at that.
Wow, that's nice.
We had, well, they had an observance yesterday at church, and there's two, you know, they had each one stand up for the different, we had two stand up for the World War II, still...
Cool.
Still, uh, there, so it's pretty neat.
Well, let's take a little break until nine o'clock for drainage.
Sounds good.
That's what you thought.
Um, just wanted to mention to you guys, um, I didn't get a picnic in for the employees this summer with the pop candy fund proceeds, so I've got a, just a luncheon scheduled for December seventeenth. See any of you guys wanna come? It's just for employees. Um, starting at eleven-thirty, and then we got some people that go to lunch at twelve and some at twelve-thirty, so it'll be done by one, one-thirty. But we're gonna use the magistrate's room in the basement.
No trouble.
We're having, um, chicken sandwiches and...
Cool.
Chicken pot pie soup and choo- cheesy broccoli soup, and, uh, seven layer salad and cheesy potatoes.
Wow.
Twelve-thirty?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Very good.
So anywhere in there that...
That's a good way to do it, I think.
Mm-hmm.
Which is a good one.
Yep.
Now, some year it'd be nice.
And if you're thinking of coming, just give me a, a heads up, an email or tell me or something. So I, Kelly wants a number of people who are coming, so she knows how much food to make, so.
Be open eyes some year. I know we can't probably because it shut down the ship, but to have all the employees come together, county workers, conservation, board house.
Yep.
Maybe you have to do it a weekend picnic or something, but some of the people that work for the county... Maybe you have to do it a weekend picnic or something, but some of the people that work for the county-
Yeah, yeah, yeah. These are higher up now, but yeah.
He was a laser pen.
Like, yeah. I should bring one of those. Oops, sorry, Mark. Give me that. We need to go very small.
Put your chair and do that.
Yeah, yeah, I could, yeah, that's right.
If I know right where it's at.
If you can see that far.
This is fifty-one, and it's north of forty-five. It's just above my finger, about two inches.
Oh, it's a small one, too.
A real small, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if you can see it from there, but the northwest corner of it, there's an old county tile in it, so we did some small reductions there also, and those are reflected in this. Three hundred and eighteen acres. Yeah, very small, very small. That's where, if you were just doing this and didn't have any soils already, probably could be ten bucks an acre, but this comes down to about five. Oh, sorry, yeah. You bet.
Carl, which district's this?
Uh, fifty-one. Fifty-one. Oh, okay. Again, same soils, considerations.
About five landowners.
Yeah, just not very many at all.
Five or six, both counties.
So, um, benefit, green, some, uh, these points are a little bit smaller than the other one just because of the soils. Range from just under fifty to about eighty points per acre. It's not a drastic spread. Again, small amounts of money because we're only spreading sixteen hundred dollars, but it comes out a little over five dollars an acre average cost. Again, this drained into District Eighteen, and since we had, we had all the soils figured out by area already for Eighteen, a lot of work was done. That's right.
And this one probably hasn't been reclassified either since the twenties?
No, no, that's right. It entered the twenties.
So this small amount, you may not do this one right away on this one possibly, or just what? See what your time's...
Well, there's not that many...
And you don't have a whole lot of...
You know how that may mean, but I suppose you just get it out before you're done with it?
You took people to levy, dude.
Yeah, then it's, then it's done, I guess.
Yeah, 'cause this one probably won't have many works done in it for a while.
Why not?
That's, yeah, that's right.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Now, let's get it out there and get it done.
So, yeah, same situation as the other one as far as costs, same situation as far as soils, values, um, so. Get, so we gotta wait a couple minutes.
You better.
Get people to check it out before we go off and get started. I haven't checked with Denver what this weather's doing to them on the job, but they're very near the south end of the main on that one twenty-five, yep. And, uh...
There you go, Brett.
They brought in the second crew earlier, and they've got about half of the big lateral going back when they hear it ain't done, but they've gotta finish that. And there's some ag wells they need to hook up yet. What the foreman told me is they're gonna work their way back up the district, putting these short stubs to the ag well again.
And they're gonna make sure everything's hooked up correctly?
Yes, correct, yes, yes. Um, they, there was one, an strange situation, and I hadn't seen it, I don't think I mentioned this to you guys, but the casing for the ag well came up pretty much to the ground surface. Turns out when they cut that down, they found that there was a tile run directly into the casing down several feet. Um, I hadn't seen that before. They nearly always have some kind of structure with the tile run into the structure, and then the casing down in the bottom of the hole. But this, this actually had like a T installed on the casing, and the tile came in there, so. Strange. You think you've seen it all, yeah, but no. Nine fifteen, nobody's around here. I assume nobody's gonna show up for this hearing.
I'll make a motion to approve the reclassification on DD fifty-one.
We have a motion, a second, to approve the reclassification of DD fifty-one. Other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Post nay? Let's move to DD seventy-two, reclassification here on. And that's at nine thirty, so we'll have to... Have to at least give a chance for people to show up. I don't know if it's good or bad, but when there's low dollar amounts involved, we don't get near the public participation.
Again, it's only five hundred acres.
Yeah, yeah, it's just not big at all. And this just sets just to the west of the previous one, so it's seventy-two. Use my paper as a pointer.
Seventy-two, too.
Yeah, yeah, true. Okay, seventy-two is right. It's the upper end of my paper.
Yeah, I might need it for what I need to...
So it's just... Now, this one's a little different in that, um, the western portion of it is also in District Five.
That's what I was kinda wondering there.
Yeah, there's an overlap. Fairly significant overlap. So, and hence, the very west part of this is like less than a quarter of a mile from the open ditch of Five, so we really believe that most of the water was probably taken there. So I want to feel on the eye. You can see that, though. You can see the overlap. Here's the part that's, the west part of it is also in Five, and you can see the factors that we used then to reduce it. Because it's so close to Ditch Five, if it doesn't go there, at least some of it, I'd be real surprised. So we did significant reductions on the two furthest west forties. And then, uh, just east of those forties, we still had fairly good reduction. And those are all reflected in, uh, what you see on the numbers. I don't know if you saw, could see it here. Here, these are, look at how close they are to Ditch Five.
Very close.
So we did significant reductions, and all of this is in Five and seventy-two.
The line here, what is that?
That's the ridge line for Five.
Actually, well, runs that way, too.
Well, this is the ridge line for Five, which says it goes this way. This is the ridge line for seventy-two, which says it goes that way. Yeah, so something's wacky there. Now, we could do, use topography and get that redone, but, I mean, I mean, it's good sense. But, been accused of that, but... Also been told you can't drain that over there.
You know, you see those overlaps now and then, but that's a pretty good overlap, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
It's kinda strange why that overlaps that far.
That much, and that seventy-two goes that far over, close to Five, yeah.
So they have to pay in both districts then?
Yeah.
Yeah.
They can petition for reclassification and get one or the other reduced, but, uh, yeah, but they're paying, they're paying both. And we get fairly significant reduction because we think the furthest ones to the west are more than likely paying a full share into Five. Paul, we're talking about reclassification, DD seventy-two. Any questions here? Way up in the bar.
We'll tell Bruce Laverne about it. We don't say your name on it anywhere.
It's gonna cost you seventeen dollars and ninety-nine cents.
Yeah, you're gonna go to the... It's in corporate letters, Laverne, apparently.
Oh, not this one. No, this one's not. This is just a small one, furthest out.
Yeah, he usually handles secondary roads, and I...
Seventeen dollars and fifty-nine...
Boy, there must not be Jimmy in this.
Oh, now, Paul. There you go. You might want to...
Oh, yeah, yes, I do, yeah.
Well, we gotta wait a few more minutes, I suppose, for that. While we're doing that, could I, we could go with some stuff... You got anything else, Rick, other than this, that we're talking about?
Oh, I was gonna tell you, last Friday, we did finish getting the exploratory done on DD six, Main and Branch B, that's down north of Thor. We got out there and located all the tile. Um, just a point of interest, the first couple hours, they were concerned because they weren't finding tile where they're sure there was tile. It's way deeper than we thought. It's not unusual for that one to be ten feet in the ground.
Wow.
Which is shocking.
That'll be a little pricey.
It's like seven feet in the ground at the end, and usually on those old districts, you don't find that.
Hmm. Tile is a... Is it playing?
It's, yeah.
How old is that, then, its concrete?
Well, it's old, 'cause it was six, six districts established in the, in the district. Yeah, in the teams, yeah. Hundred years, so.
How big was that, thirty-six inch?
Uh, that we're doing?
No, the, the pipe that we're discovering, young covering.
Oh, no, it's smaller than that. Uh, the biggest, I think, is, well, some of it, getting close to the ditch was that big, but...
Yeah, it was like a three coming out.
Um, I remember twenty-fours, twenty-twos. Yeah, some of it close to the outlet was thirty, as big as thirty-six. And that's one where the, uh, branch B that went north, it crossed the road on, and then went north on the east side of the road. A lot of it was in the road ditch and shallow and breaking all the time, so. We're gonna stay west of the road with B now, because it mostly is going north to pick up a sub-district. So that'll be done. But we'll use that to do the final design here on it. We have the hearing on the east part of that. That's the one where a landowner did the petition, but I think the buyer submitted the cash or the bond.
Right.
Yeah, and that's one where we're either gonna do two reclassifications, or we're gonna find a way to have the most benefit paying the most, uh, similarly.
Wouldn't having two reclassifications maybe be able to distinguish that a little easier?
Yes, I really think so.
In my opinion, I think that's private favor.
It's a separate project.
Yeah, we do...
And even when you do, here's my thought, you, you separate them, so that puts those dollars in that area and the dollars in this area. But not only that, then you go inside that second setting, which you've already got the dollar, and then make sure you're assigning enough dollars to where the big improvements are gonna be.
Yes, yes.
So you kinda got a double chance, 'cause it's better than trying to assign that over all and getting it blended.
Yes.
And these are real dollars on these projects.
Oh, yeah, these would be significant dollars.
Don't you think, right?
Oh, yeah.
I mean, that would make more sense.
I think the average on the one inch was like eight hundred and something dollars an acre.
So that's an average, which could be like twenty-four hundred versus four hundred, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
And may, and maybe it should be, if there's that much improvement on that area.
Yes, we'll look, we'll look hard at that, and we'll, we'll look, because the initial one then would be used for this construction.
Right.
For the next season, and then the next, the second reclass would be for future maintenance. We did that for thirteen-eighth and included Humboldt and...
What was the reason they had to go to ten foot down?
I don't know.
It looks pretty flat in through there. How you didn't realize there was that big a hill?
I, I know. That's right. I, we were shocked. And the trench, the old trench, we, they had trouble spotting the trench, 'cause it was weirdly wide. They figured they used it... Yeah, yeah, they figured they used it...
Oh, they dug out and stepped down and dug out again.
Yeah. Well, yeah, that's true.
Swept great, yeah.
That's true, yeah.
The teams, yeah, that one depends.
Was they, did they roll them, what, they rolled them in this? And you wouldn't have nothing to set something that big down in there?
They, they tiered down, so they're...
Rolled down a little bit of the time?
Step foot, dirt, some sort.
We're, we're a man there.
Cost a lot of money to do it that way, Dave.
Yeah, it wouldn't be done, nobody would look that hard.
That'd have been something to see, and I don't wanna go back to that, do the work, but...
So on another issue, then, are you real close on DD two with Gilmore City stuff?
Yes, yes, yes.
So what's our time, or do we have something set up on that?
We should meet yet this week to finalize that, the way it looks to me.
And do we have a date set on, any dates? We don't?
No, I think either next Monday or the Monday after, you'll be able to set a date.
Which we need to.
Yes, absolutely.
And then, did you get anything from Mike Bowman at all?
Just, it's the same message that...
You got before?
Twenty-eight E agreement, as long as the dollars are not exceeded there.
Do you think we have, we're under that, or are we pretty close on that?
I think we're, I think we're under.
So any little bit would help.
Yeah, that's exactly right. That's exactly right.
So maybe by the time we have that meeting with Gilmore City residents, we will have that number, I hope.
That's, that's our goal, yes.
We need that number.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, that's, that's fine.
And we'll use the claims and what you've allowed.
'Cause we need to bring that to a head.
Oh, absolutely. Uh, nobody wants that more than me. Yes.
Good.
Yes. Oh, yeah, the claim, yes, yeah.
Right, we got five more minutes.
You have anything else to talk about?
Yeah, we got, yeah, we got five more minutes. I was talking to Bruce last week a little bit. You know, we're going over this, I'm just going over the work sheet Trish just gave us on September fifteenth, so, you know, several of these items are probably completed, aren't they, now, Trish?
Mm-hmm.
So, I just, you know, maybe next month, you could give us another update on this, and, you know, we're talking about deliveries of, you know, how do we protect, I'm getting used to the word, proprietized, uh... You know, when we get these requests, and then how do, how do we stay on task to keep the most farther out requests worked on first? And I know it's tough, 'cause like with the contractors, they like to look at...
Yeah, when you talk to them, we're in the area, they wanna do the whole one in the area, get them done first.
So...
Well, we have such a shortage.
I think we would have to...
We pull them from different areas, you know, like DD six, the head wall was our big concern this year for Doug.
Right.
And so we pulled him basically off of that.
And he's about the one that can do those kinda things. So that, one other opportunity is if we sat down with Trish and worked with our contract, and, you know, if we need to keep them in groupings, then we need to kinda group these contractors in those areas. If we want somebody to work in this area northeast around Lake or Town, and we want somebody out, maybe we're gonna have to have separate contractors, I mean, keep them separated a little bit. To work, you know, try to break a workload in the area so they can get to them. I mean, it does save us money if they don't have to move around, I do understand that, 'cause...
Different things come at different times.
But on the other side, I think, when you go through this list, I think a lot of these, I know we got some new ones, but our list should be shrinking, shouldn't it, Trish? I mean, we should be gaining pretty hard on this.
Sorta.
But the simple fact that if someone had a work request in spring, and we're still not covered on that, then, oh, that has to be moved up the list.
And the only problem is some, is what has happened, and Doug has done this before, too, and I know there's one over in the Harding area, they turn it in, and then if it doesn't get done in the spring, once the crops are planted, they're telling the farmers, saying, "No, I don't want you out there." So then that throws his system off, too. We have to account for that somehow. You know, if they're gonna go in there and they can't do it when there's a crop in there, well, then that kinda throws that back. That guy should realize he's throwing himself out of position. If they don't want it in there, you have to start over again.
Well, then he should also be able to call her and say, "On April, July..."
Make a contact, the farmer didn't want to do it.
"The farmer says, 'Don't touch it,' then..."
Yeah, then she can document it, so that when they say, "Well, you never got to it," well, on, "Did you remember on April fifth?" You can call them, 'cause I've got one now, over there on the Billy Nielsen, up north of Harding. It was on the dredge ditch. There's a, there's a slop off or washout, and he said he turned it, well, then they planted crops, so he didn't want anybody in there. But now he wants, he, he said that needs to be fixed. Billy Nielsen?
That makes it difficult, 'cause your slop out window is really small.
Right.
They don't want much to put in the bottom of the list.
But you can't hold it against contract. If he tries to get in there, and then they say, "No, I don't want you in there."
For the guy that let him in, maybe this guy that didn't let him in has to go at the bottom of the list.
That's what I'm saying. That's the way I think you'd have to look at it. And I told him, and I said, "Well, we'll get you back up there," but I said, you know, I need, you know, sometimes it happens when you have one, and then they go and they don't do it, then it gets dropped, or somebody forgets we had that one to do.
Forget about it, even, yeah.
The other hand, if it's too bad a bank over here, you need to go and...
Absolutely, you know, absolutely. Right, right.
Otherwise, you'll have more damage.
On the Marshall's, one, one, Brandon Meyer fixed. He said it doesn't need any dirt, so take that off that. That was Brandon Meyer, who said it might need some dirt. He said it does, so it's, we don't have to put it down.
We got a couple more minutes here. Anything else we need to throw on the table?
And Doug's in, he put dirt in that if we need to.
Did you get any calls from the...
I need to, that's one.
Well, that, there ain't just a couple. They didn't call me last week, and they said they wouldn't, and then we had to go over them. They were gonna go underneath that one road, and it was a locator, and see if it was plugged anyplace onto the road, but I didn't get a call, so I don't know. I thought maybe they might have called.
I don't think they did it more. I had, I had a landowner talk to me about similar deal, and, uh, it was too wet conditions or whatever.
Okay.
Appears to be the main problems is roots.
So if you've got, I think, some of this, you think some of this is a good idea? I think it'd be if Trish sometime in December, towards the end of the month, stood up, gotta forget through all these drainage, district meetings and all this other stuff. Maybe we could just have a new updated list on this, and we could sit down and go over it, and then we can find out if there's something we don't think's on it that's been turned to dust, maybe, and then try and see if we can see what's going on, or how much is left to do, so.
I can probably print one off. I keep it up to date.
Do you? Or maybe we could get one next week or something?
Like after, if any, I could track them.
Okay. 'Cause I'm sure it's been updated quite a bit from this one. So if, if a project is completed on here, you take it off this list. Is that how you're doing it, or you... Okay. 'Cause I'm sure, I know there's several on here that I see that I think are done, but I, you know, if you update that again, we can take a look at that. Maybe we could sit down with her and figure that out.
If there's anything we're working on, we'd be very interested in any priorities you set, so we'd...
Yeah, and you talked to Doug about it.
I'd like to know how to set priorities, though.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, he, he tried to be there last week, Friday.
We weren't calling.
Oh, okay.
And weather conditions...
Typical one, you got it.
Oh.
Everyone wants to stop and look at it.
Yeah, and get back over to...
So is it because we don't have enough contractors that are willing to do that type of work, is that...
That's the biggest problem.
So why don't we put a, a, uh, request out, looking for more?
They all know it.
Yeah.
I mean, they, they know we got work. But what happens, it's just like McPeet's, good example. They did a lot of small work, great work, do great work, no problem. Well, they're into this boring now, and they're making big money. They do not have the time. You cannot pay them enough to quit the boring, to go do this. Now, he was working on Saturdays, maybe a Sunday, to do some private stuff, but I said, "Kevin, you can't keep doing that forever either." I mean, but, you know, if he really had a project, he'd go out and fix it, a small one, you know, on a Saturday, on his own, not have his workers in, 'cause he doesn't wanna pay them overtime, but... So, and Patterson's are getting a little more selective. They're almost not...
I can't really get them...
They used to be really good. When I started twelve years, they did a lot. Well, they really don't want them, they've got different, you know, looking at things...
If the landowner calls them, a specific one?
There's the other thing. When we get somebody that calls you, says they have a broken tile, ask them if they got somebody they'd like to call, would call, 'cause they'll respond to the landowner quicker than they will us, 'cause maybe they've done tiling for them in the past or something. They're almost with better results.
They have a better connection with them.
You know, and the other thing...
The ones that Patterson done are basically the landowners that have called, say, "I got all the Patterson's, they'll fix this."
We called Patterson's.
If we call, they're gonna say, "Well, we're just not doing, we're just not doing any of that."
That's it. Maybe he said I could maybe scare somebody up and a machine, but we don't want just anybody out there, 'cause we want them to know...
Brandon Meyer's been really good, but now all of a sudden, Wright County knows he's really good, so now all of a sudden, we're sharing more with, you know, every... He's doing good work, so they're getting calls over there, too. He's kinda on the border.
We don't do that.
And Doug Marshall, and that's about all. You tell me who else is left. Rick Peterson will do some ditch cleanouts, but he's not really into tiling or things like that.
And then I gotta run into the farming with him.
And that's all.
Just the farms, also, so it's...
You know, the other thing, it's true, it's the worst schedule. It's a long way from Renwick to Lanion, or to Pioneer.
Yeah.
There's a lot of big, a lot of difference in the weather, too. They might rain in one part, and on the other, they pull off over here, and then the guy up here's mad, 'cause he, you know, kinda...
There's a lot involved, yeah.
Then everybody wants it after, before plating and after hard, even when the wind is angry, bear.
Okay, back to DD seventy-two, reclassification. Other discussion on DD seventy-two? This ended up between Five and the average again. Same soils, we did the reductions we talked about. I showed you that on this drawing, where there was an overlap in Five and seventy-two. This is what commissioners came up with. We have a motion to approve the reclassification of DD seventy-two.
I'll make a motion for reclassification, DD seventy-two.
Motion by Rick, seconded by Bruce. Other discussion? Any discussion?
Hold on here, Mark might have something.
DD seventy-two.
I'm a little late.
You're a little late.
I'm a little late. We're, we're wearing this...
We haven't voted yet, but it's still open.
Well, we got some letters that she...
Oh, there's no opposition or anything to it?
Yeah, we, we're opposed, I guess, um...
But this is on, like, DD, this is on...
Oh, I'm on the other one.
Well, you're on.
Yeah. Seventy-two.
Oh, you already did forty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 the first one.
No, I'm lying. That one got passed, too.
Sorry about that. That's my fault. Okay, we have a motion and a second, and we're open to more discussion on seventy-two. Hearing now, all in favor of approving reclassification of DD seventy-two, say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? Motion carried.
Sorry. Give them to us anyway.
Yeah.
You wanna, you wanna see them anyway, Mark, the letters? Or do you have something to present?
No.
Oh, you just brought it in, okay. You did talk to Bruce the other second time, right, and went over some of this, so...
Anything else in the range this morning? Um, I got a call from Kim Emerson, Emerson.
Emerson.
They, they're concerned that our DD one twenty-five is adding water to the river that's gonna cause further flooding on some of their ground than they have now. I'm just gonna meet with them and go through what we've, what we're doing on one twenty-five. When you start talking river and a thirty-six inch pipe going in the river, when some of the water got there already anyway, immeasurable. You, you, I don't think you could measure the difference.
This furnace is gonna cut down some surface water, too.
Well, that's why I tried not saying over the phone. We're, this, having the tile, having it tiled and the wa, and drained typically, will mean that the surges should be a little less, because the ground will act as a sponge and take some of that first rains, yes.
Plus, it should be removing the water as it's, you know, ahead of time before a big surge.
Exactly, exactly. That's...
That's the biggest flush. Like a dry sponge, very good, a dry sponge.
Yeah, so that should help the surges, actually, so...
When you close ag wells, where it's stopped and right down an ag well now, it goes in the river, it does increase water in the river. I had that argument with the guy before, and, and, well, jeez, it used to go right in the aquifer, now it goes in the river, so...
Yeah.
But it isn't that much.
But what we all need to understand, if we don't clean up this water on our own, we are gonna be told we can't do it with it.
That's right.
And if we don't get proactive and stay proactive, there's no way we're gonna stay ahead of this.
Did I show you our area drainage? Yeah, you did a lot of that.
Right, we talked about it.
We're doing that with anything new now, um, and it's, and also...
Because if we don't voluntarily look for new ideas to improve, they're gonna just tell you what to do.
That's right, and there was more on the Sunday paper.
And I know, even on these ditch cleanouts, people get... Well, you know, even on, on ditch cleanouts anymore, there'll, there'll be a day we're gonna have to have, um, fencing. It's gonna have to be all kinds of issues that are gonna add extra cost to that, you know?
That's right.
It's like silt runoff.
Yeah.
And you see, that's why a lot of guys are tiling out their farms, and adding to the...
They're working on the dredge ditch, too.
I know, I know.
A week from today, there's a drainage research forum up in Owatonna, it just happens to be at Cabela's. That one of the topics is... Is these area drains and the positive effect, buffer strips. And there's a research summary being presented at this in regards to that, and that's one of the main reasons I'm going, is to get that in...
Well, and...
Research basis. Yeah, research basis.
It's all research and all the running gear.
Hasn't been any meeting between Minnesota and Iowa?
Yes, yes. Yep. John Roberts...
John, Monday, though, it's on the board, it's in the board, I guess, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Three months ago.
Ask you, go with it.
I'll give you five bucks, you can ring button. Okay, anything else to trade? I entertain a motion going on. Motion by Bruce, seconded by Mark, to go out of drainage. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post nay? We're back in general section.
I think we're done, I would say.
Thank you, Rick.
I'd like to talk, I could change your...
Okay.
I'd like to talk about...
They'll have Peggy come back, and then...
If it doesn't, then we're gonna...
While waiting on Peggy to come, I'd encourage you all to go sign up for the annual drainage, because they're probably gonna be talking about words of US, and some of them are figures brought up.
Yes, they are.
Good information.
I thought Peggy already did.
Yeah, we all did. And then this one, and the day before that, we go to Charles City. I like that, and see if you go up there. We talked about legislation, and I said a lot later.
They want a small report. Do you have that brochure for the drainage, 'cause I...
We do.
Yeah, we do.
Say, Paul?
We have mine on this pickup one.
Second, I'm trying to figure out what I can add.
I don't know. We only asked him anyway. We kinda get our...
We thought we could get you done, Peggy, but Paul wanted you back.
We probably need to meet in like seven-thirty that morning, anybody, I plan on going. If anybody else wants to sign up, we'll just meet out here about seven o'clock, seven-thirty, and take off.
I usually go like in the...
Okay. Peggy's, need to sign up with Peggy, so she gets paid for it. Okay, Peggy, uh, we're back in general section. Paul wants to add a few things here to talk to you.
I, uh, had a message when I got back to the office that involves our part-time help that we had last year. Excellent candidate, did a nice job. We wanted him back, and somebody in this room stole him, so, uh, we don't have any...
I know who you're talking about.
Because he's now a board member, anyway, uh, approve, I'm, I'm gonna, I wanna post a position for temporary part-time and get it in the paper already to get the wheels in motion, because we need to fill one of our part-time. We have a, a part-time route, uh, on a patrol that we fill with part-time every year, and our, uh, last year's help is unavailable this year, and I want to get it posted in the paper to get anybody, uh, as soon as possible.
Is that based on experience a little bit too, in case you have a follow-up?
Yes, well, here's, here's the way I'm posting it, Humble County Secondary Roads is currently taking applications for a temporary part-time labor position for snow removal. Ability to obtain a Class A commercial driver's license and a pre-employment physical, including drug testing, is required. Successful applicants would be available as needed with wages of minimum of fifteen dollars an hour. Application forms are available and must be filed at the county engineer's office at two 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 one two twenty street, Humble, Iowa, no later than four thirty PM Wednesday, December second, two thousand fifteen, or until filled.
How far do you go with advertising yet?
Uh, locally, I mean, we need somebody locally.
Yeah, so they can't be driving thirty, forty miles on the budget.
We, we usually, uh, run it in both papers a couple weeks, and I'd like to get it fired up today.
So, so say one of them was a former employee?
I don't know.
Would it be fifteen bucks an hour?
I don't know.
You would negotiate, that's all.
Well, we would pay a former employee, I mean, there's no savings already in the system.
Well, that's what I was hoping, okay.
And then we have a couple of former employees that.
Could do it, right?
Reluctantly jump in, but, uh, we need somebody, uh, see what's out there.
Okay.
We generally have gotten very fortunate over the years with this temporary part-time position, but the good help comes and goes.
Would you hire me, I got a CDL with a medical.
Not, uh, no, absolutely, jump in, jump in the pool, the water is fine, but I am gonna post this, and there wouldn't be any hiring, obviously, until we got board approval, but I want to get it posted.
Yeah, good.
Since you're here, before you laugh, I did speak to John last week, and on Friday, he called me back, and I asked him if he heard anything on the dirt pile.
Oh, yeah.
And, uh, he told me the judge on that case would be here today, and he was gonna update or brief him or find out where he's at, so I hope to get some kind of status this week, it's time to know what's going on.
Well, he was gonna touch base.
Well, at least he found out, did he, did I know what he's doing, he's looking at it?
He, he can't press him, obviously.
No.
He'll try to see what's going on.
Yeah, that's what he told me, right.
And that's what I wanted to present to the whole board before we saw an ad in the paper.
Since you're a steward, still here, Paul, I was gonna bring this up to the board, do you want to test that with them too?
Um, yeah, I, we generally, we pay roughly six hundred dollars a month for the safety program, for the safety director, as we have none at this point. I told them, why would we pay that? And I questioned, why wouldn't we pay it? As soon as you hire a safety director, then, well, I'm assuming we'll be paying again.
Yeah.
And you pay that to that account, right? From your account to that?
I don't know, it goes to her office and how it is.
See, the problem is, we're still paying the safety director, he has four wages, but.
Is he doing, is he supposed to be doing the safety job?
He told us he wouldn't, but we've told by the attorneys we have to pay him. So we're, we're, we'd be picking up the bill, the general funds to pay what you don't pay a thing. It's gotta be paid, cause he's getting the money and not doing it. But he's on administrative leave.
But on the other side, they're not getting what they're paying for.
They're not getting the services. I don't know who gets it, we have to pay the six hundred bucks, but Paul shouldn't, he can't, we, we have to pay it out, because we've been told on a.
Tell the judge, tell us differently.
So, we have to eat it somehow.
Good point.
And then further into it, it becomes, is it Humble County Secondary Road Safety Director, or is it Humble County Safety Director? That's another good question.
What if we have, what if we have an issue with the safety, and we don't have anybody taking, has that position covered?
That's been my question since.
Then we're all in. Do you know if anybody can back us up?
Uh, we have safety issues, our first response is nine one one, the second response is, uh, if it's in an EPH, uh, foremen have some responsibilities, but we usually default it right to him. For instance, if somebody comes in and we suspect that they are incapacitated in some sort or another, the foreman, all but one, I don't think Jeff has been, have been trained to recognize, but just because of our arrangements, we then referred it back to Doug and, um, Pat if we got to there. And to date, we haven't ever had to, but we have to have these kind of things available, uh.
You run the work comp claims through them also, right?
Uh, work comp claims, it's, uh, that's right to the nine one one first, if it's not anything eminent, or it's not anything that's right, life-threatening, then you call the eight hundred number, God help you.
Who does the paperwork?
Uh, the, the, the nurse does over the phone. And then it comes back through Peggy and Peggy funnels them out.
Okay.
We don't have anything to do with that anymore, even.
Well, let me ask this then, Carl, if, you know, we gotta pay him till somebody tells us different.
He should pay him, we gotta pay him.
No, but I mean, it's gotta, he's, he's getting paid whether he's doing it or not, so, at some point, if he's saying, when this is all done, and you don't think he's gonna take any of this, which we don't know for sure, then what's our next option? Are we gonna go to Melanie, are we gonna go open it up, or what do you think you guys might?
Our attorney folks, we shouldn't do anything till we get this closed.
Which we don't know how long that's gonna take.
Six, sometime in December, we have a.
There are public hearings, remember?
Well, yeah, but you know how that goes.
Without a safety director, what are you gonna do?
Well, we're going to the Leighton Street.
Yeah, there's a public hearing in a courthouse on December sixteenth, you can all come and hear what's going on.
I think I will.
When's that, Carl?
December sixteenth at nine o'clock, in the courthouse. Courtroom, interesting.
I think we should probably go to that.
You gotta go down.
Well, I think we all should, I think we all should.
I think we should.
So what are your wishes, how should I handle this? Should I, should we hold off billing Paul until?
Yeah.
And to answer Paul's question, it would be a Humble County safety position, but no programs are offered for courthouse people, so, you know, it's not that we've been partaking of it, we.
Well, they have in the past, I mean.
In the past, but it's been many years.
Well, we had CPR where we did two sessions not long ago.
But let's just say a majority would be secondary roads, I mean, that's pretty, that being said, I don't think it's right, they keep probably paying on it, if we don't have nothing for that, I mean, I don't.
Yeah, the payment was just under sixteen.
What time was it?
Nine o'clock, nine AM. Courtroom.
Which isn't that far away, like six hundred a month?
Last Street's courtroom. Yeah, I was hoping you got a hash out.
Yeah, and I'm not sure how that number ever got arrived at, but.
Hard pass, right?
Maybe that's something to think of too, when we, when we get that back.
He did the stuff himself, he didn't hire somebody, right?
Um. But he broke down his salary based on some of these things.
This isn't all salary, this is consortium fees originally too.
Oh, it's both mixed.
So out of safety, they paid, uh, it was through, uh, Iowa Central originally, where there was multiple counties, multiple counties in the city.
About all we can go on now, Carl, is if, if, if you or the judges or whoever's determined that that percentage is the amount that's for the safety director, we just have to eat it as a safety director cost, in my opinion.
Till we get to, make it clear.
But what, what?
Can we take it out of community betterment for the short period, or, what's gonna be the least?
It'd be easier just to, to continue to be paid out as general basic, I can tell.
Okay, out of Paul's, you mean, or out of anybody?
No, right now, right now, it's paid for and we just bill him.
Oh, okay.
So if he doesn't reimburse anything back, it just doesn't replay.
Just drop the billing.
Drop it, okay.
The consortium is.
Well, now, hopefully we get this resolved.
Okay.
The safety director handled all of whoever the hired guns coming in to present, present the task, whatever it was. On any of the other things, on an individual basis, whether it would be fees for CPR or hearing checks or whatever, we paid, secondary roads paid directly.
Alright.
But to arrange the hired gun to talk about, uh, uh, trenching and shoring, uh, ergonomics.
That was all part of the stuff?
Workspace, workspace safety or office of safety, all of the VS, or all of the required training for, uh, uh, yeah.
Alright.
On the other side, Karen, if we are up to snuff on that, as a county, we're putting ourselves in jeopardy not having to.
And that's why I think this wraps up for Bruce, and we'll have to fix, we'll have to fix it somehow internally, because we need to, we generally look at the first part of December and we pick up some safety training, we don't usually necessarily have hired guns there, but we have some of the off stuff off of the ocean.
Exactly.
And we do some training, we talk about our snow, uh, snow ordinance, uh, we usually get dispatcher, the, the, the dispatchers and or deputies and sheriff, somebody to come up, so we make sure that we have all the communication bugs out in the event of winter, uh, snow.
Have some of those things mandatory, have to do at least once a year.
Right, the mandatory stuff is what gets fees involved, and that's what safety, but we would continue to probably plow ahead and, and do some of the internal stuff, and at this point, in the absence of a safety.
Maybe we ought to talk to Mr. Beatty and see what he suggests.
And I'm hopeful this stuff clears pretty bright.
Well, and maybe we could just have Peggy give a call to like Wright or, uh, Pocahontas County Council, and ask if they could just be on backup, if we don't need them, that's fine, but maybe we could just have, you know, it'd be nice at least to have a backup.
Yeah, that's a good call, that way the insurance company don't.
You know, they could just charge us a flat per deep op, per situation rate or something, we have to, I mean, we don't know how long this is gonna last, it could be done December, it might not.
Can't get done out.
Most of it, if it's accident related, it's already on autopilot.
Right, right, right.
But if it's the things in preparation, we have a spreadsheet on where we've been, we have a spreadsheet on what we need to get, the actual getting ahold of contact and hiring somebody, I have done that, so, we'll wait, we already had one this summer, uh, and, uh, we'd probably be looking for the hired guns to be in February, March, somewhere in the open winter part.
And if necessary, get some advice, if this is not solved, you can still contact those people and hire them and have your meetings, I would think.
Switching gears, I'm quick, are you covering zoning?
Yes.
Okay. We're kinda okay on that.
For a couple weeks.
Like, like there's.
And there's been a few, I mean.
Well, there will be.
There's action out there, uh.
There will be.
Some of the stuff, I, uh, read what the, uh, what it's zoned, what they have to meet, and, and beyond that, uh, uh, for instance, what's agricultural, Mr. Beatty?
I know, I've been down this road with you before, what is and what isn't, we don't know.
I don't know, we don't, I, if somebody says it's a machine shed and they're on an acreage and don't have a plow in the shed, does that make it agricultural? I don't know.
I don't know.
I went and looked back and it's been agricultural before, so it still is.
I think it still is.
It would be, I would think as long as it's not within.
Just keep touch with the chairman, run him by him, he can, if he has a problem.
If you all come up with the, the night, the Friday, the eighteenth, we'll probably know more after that date.
Sixteenth, I think.
Sixteenth. Get the right date first. Sixteenth.
What's, uh, what's going on up the, the corner at those, where you're doing your training, uh, and trying out efficient equipment to leveling that dirt pile, or what are you doing?
Well, we, we demoed, uh, and, um.
That's all that is, is just, you're training.
Two weeks, both of them, will you do it, please? Yeah, otherwise they can stop, yeah.
Same with Bill.
Uh, we demoed, we demoed a catgiller, uh, the newest, the latest and greatest cat, we demoed, uh, a week or so ago it was, and, uh.
Cause it looks so smooth, nice.
We, we played and played around and then they.
Roll danger or what?
Broke the control, and, uh, we also wanted to see what kind of, you know, just playing rock around doesn't take a lot of horsepower, said, they had a dirt pile and, uh, they leveled and played it, and they got in and hogging dirt around, see what kind of power it had.
Sure.
And they played with it up there, and that's what Mort was.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we will demo, uh, John Deere here soon, I hope, because, uh, we're trying to get apples, apple demos going.
Another thing we got here, what they find out at the landfill, did they ever find them liable?
Yes, they weren't deep enough.
Oh, they just weren't going deep enough, okay. So all is good then out there. Anything else for us, Paul? Anybody from anybody?